Are facing a crisis as housing prices have risen to record levels, making it challenging for even families earning six-figure incomes to find affordable homes. Responding to the crisis requires creativity and persistence and a focus on what we call the three Ps. Production of new market rate and affordable housing, preservation of existing affordable and naturally affordable housing, and protection for our residents who are facing displacement and gentrification pressures. We are going to ask you candidates tonight several questions to understand how you see the crisis and how you, as an elected leader from District Six, would approach potential solutions. So without further ado, we're going to get started and we're going to start with candidate opening remarks. Each candidate is going to have about one minute, there's a timekeeper there in the front, to give us our opening remarks.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you everyone. My name is Andrew Boone. I'm running for city council and large part due to this, we need to change the policies that we've had in place for decades that have led to this catastrophe that we're in. And the current San Jose City Council is not steering us in a new direction. We are stuck with the same policies that have led us to this crisis, one of them being not charging real estate developers their full fees that they should pay to develop so that we can subsidize affordable housing in San Jose. Just yesterday, Dev Davis voted to continue giving that corporate giveaway. That costs us taxpayers money for wealthy real estate developers to build luxury housing. This isn't the policies that set us in the right direction. We have to treat this as the emergency it is, and that means rezoning land from commercial and industrial to residential and prioritizing residential development over other development types in San Jose. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Dev Davis. I'm running for reelection for this seat. And first of all, I want to thank the organizers and the moderators for putting this event on this evening. It's always a great opportunity to be able to speak with the residents and to dialogue, especially with students. I'm looking forward to this conversation this evening. It's really important that we talk about housing because it is such an important issue, not just in San Jose and the Bay Area, but statewide and frankly, in pretty much every urban area around the country. In California alone, we have three and a half million units of housing that should exist that don't, and a million of those missing units are in the nine counties of the Bay Area. That's why this is such an important issue. I'm trained in public policy, I have two master's degrees, and what that training taught me is how to craft the best policy for both now and the future. We can't just react to policies and to do what sounds good right now if that's going to cause more problems down the road. We have to be thoughtful in our approach to solving problems today while assuring that those problems, that those solutions don't cause more problems down the road. If you think about climate change and fossil fuels, that's one example of doing something that sounded good and then didn't work out well for us down the road.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jake Tonkel. And again, you know, Ramona, Wendy, Mario, everyone that put this on, District Six gets to be the guinea pigs for the affordable housing forums, and hopefully, all of us are excited to be here. I know I am. My background, I'm a returned Peace Corps volunteer, so I spent two and a half years in Morocco, working on community development, working in spaces with doctors, teachers, nurses, engineers, figuring out how we come together to move a town forward. And that's what I want to do for the city of San Jose. I'm currently employed as a biomedical R&amp;D engineer, work for a company over in Campbell that's a small startup. And that creativity that is needed in startups is what we need on San Jose City Council. So we are in the midst of two crises, an affordable housing crisis and an environmental crisis. And as we move forward, both of those things need to be taken into account, and they have not been for the last 20 years. We need new ideas, and I'm hoping to do that.
Hello, my name is Marshall Mancy, candidate for San Jose City Council, District Six. I want to thank you all for being here, flexing your civic engagement in this tumultuous time of politics. I am a student, active community member, and climate activist. And all three of those sectors of my life are made challenging by the housing crisis. My peers are forced to sleep in their cars, my community members are being priced out of their homes, and across the state, climate refugees are popping up as their homes are destroyed by natural disasters and their communities are deemed unviable to live in. In 30 years, I'll still be in the prime of my life. So I want you to consider, as the solutions I present tonight, they're not just solutions for our current housing crisis, they're our solutions for our future, for my future. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll hold on to this next time. Thank you, candidates. So the first round of questions, there's going to be two questions, and they're going to be focused around the general plan, and you have one minute to answer each of these two. The city is embarking on a four-year review of its general plan, which will provide the opportunity to review several key policies that impact housing development. We expect that these two issues will be considered. So the first question on the general plan, San Jose has often stated that it is jobs poor, housing-rich city, and its general plan includes projections and policies that favor jobs. The jobs are now coming. According to city data, developments that would house more than 50,000 jobs are now in the pipeline, but at the same time, only 7,000 new homes are in the process. As Google plans to come to San Jose, some have called for it to build as many as 14,000 new homes for the planned employees. What do you think the city's role is in planning for homes for the new employees? One minute each, and we can start with you, Marshall.
The city's role in planning for our massive influx in tech employees is a very important one, most notably with the Google development, which I am in support of. They are planning already numerous housing developments. It is the city's responsibility to ensure that those housing developments are in line with the city's goals of sustainability, as well as our community goals and morals. Those developments have to involve urban farming, they have to involve passive heating and lighting, platinum-lead-certified developments that will not have a detrimental impact on our environment. Those buildings also can have a detrimental impact on our community, and in fact, they should build community. There should be open spaces for people to mingle, build, create, be creative. We are given an opportunity here with Google, and it is very easy for us to squash that opportunity, and there's also a time constraint. An action must be taken now to ensure that the Google developments are right for our community. Thank you.
The city's role in all aspects, whether it's for new employees or current residents, is quality of life, right? We see that there is a distinct difference in the quality of life of people that are struggling in the city of San Jose and many of the new employees that will move in, and so it's a requirement that the city looks at all the negative consequences, the negative externalities of these new jobs, and accounts for that. And make sure that the benefactors, whether it's the new residents or the business, are also accounting for that as well. It's the role of the city to ensure that every resident has the right to stay here that's currently here, and that we have a place, like Marshall said, where people can engage in the quality of life that's walkable, bikeable, climate-friendly, and if we don't do that well, we're going to continue to see displacement of current San Joseans, we're going to continue to see our city council talk about meeting its climate goals and failing to meet them, and it's important that that holistic approach is in every discussion that we have.
When it comes to housing, the city's responsibility is threefold. The first thing is there's a regional housing needs assessment that happens from a regional governing body, and we get targets at all different kinds of levels of affordability every seven years. And so first of all, it's our responsibility to enact policies that will help us meet those housing goals for every seven years. Second, it's important for us to ensure that housing is located in the areas where we can best deliver services to those new residents. So what we're doing is passing urban village plans and densifying so that there is more building downtown for residents and in the Deardon station area, as I'm sure you've all heard, and other areas where we know we can mix businesses and residents so people can have walkable areas and can get to what they need, either walking or through a bike. The third thing is really to make, to process development requests as quickly as possible so that housing can get built. I've been on the ad hoc development committee for the entire time I've been on council, and we've been working on those process improvements so that things can get built faster.
Thank you. Again, I think that the city's role in addressing housing for a large influx of jobs, which is ongoing, is to make sure that we are balancing the numbers. So we are saying, we're foreseeing, for example, the Google Deardon development to have 20,000 very highly-paid engineers and computer scientists, but only 3,000 to 5,000 new units of housing associated with that development. That's what I read in the newspaper last, it was reported, this is what Google presented. We are going to build something that causes displacement, a huge amount of it, and the city council is right now saying that that's okay. So for future development in the city, we need to balance the amount of housing that development creates a demand for at least, and then go beyond that because we need to catch up with the lack of housing we have. And I think our general plan really sets us in the wrong direction by prioritizing jobs over housing in the plan. Saying that, we should have the same number of those things, or we need to catch up with jobs. We can have more housing than jobs as long as we are building those in places that are accessible to transit, where people can travel easily between San Jose and around the Bay Area. Thank you.
And the second question on the general plan, the city's current zoning laws severely limit where housing can be built. Commercial zoning often excludes housing entirely, and 94% of residential land in San Jose is zoned exclusively for single homes, single houses. Do you support changing these zoning laws to allow more opportunities for housing development, and if so, how?
Well, first of all, on council, we've already done some work on this. The areas where there are single-family homes can now build granny units or backyard homes, they're also called ADUs, there's about six different names for those things. But basically, it's a way to densify what our mostly suburban landscape has, which is single-family homes on lots. Also, I just want to point out, it's important for us not to completely lose our commercial lands because as big of a city as we are, only 13% of our land is actually designated for commercial use. But what we can do and what we are going to be looking at in the general plan review, and I'm on that task force, is ways to do more mixed-use sites on already established business corridors. So basically, as you've seen in many big cities, putting homes or apartments above the businesses that are at the street level. And then I also, I had mentioned urban villages before, that's another way for us to have businesses and residences mixed in together. It also makes the city much more walkable and pedestrian-friendly.
So I support rezoning in many cases. The city of Minneapolis has had tremendous success in the last three years, going from single-family homes to duplexes and triplexes in spaces that keep neighborhood character. The urban village plans and densifying around transit is extremely important, and being able to make sure that we use the correct commercial spaces in that same regard when we're looking at zoning is going to be vital to making sure that we have a place that's movable. We need to be very careful about what we do from an environmental justice perspective. Rezoning commercial land is only going to be effective for housing if it's safe for housing, right? The last point I wanted to make, when we talk about losing our commercial land, that's because we're in a space where the city council for decades has decided, we're going to collect taxes in this tiny little box, and then we're going to try and put more and more taxes on residents to make up for the difference, rather than looking at innovative ways that we can tax on commercial development and others so that we have the opportunity to create the housing that we need.
I said I'd give solutions for our future. Well, here's the first one. Co-living has been proven and is increasingly used as the most affordable, healthy, and effective way to solve our housing crisis at all levels of income. You don't need to rezone your building to add more rooms to your house. It is a much simpler process. My family, we are building 10 rooms on our house, and we will see the turnover rates for our development cleared in about five years from the rent we gain. Co-living builds community, it builds healthy relationships between people, it inspires people to meet their neighbors and be more civically engaged. It is also a very quick fix to our housing crisis that is in line with what the city council's already done with ADUs, except we could be putting funding towards even more dwellers per lot. It is kind of surprising that every single-family home has an average of about three residents on these beautiful lots all around my district. I think that number should be threefold, nine, 10, 11 people per dwelling. Thank you so much.
Yes, I definitely support rezoning land from commercial and industrial to residential in a lot of areas of the city. I think many specific parcels in certain areas should be residential instead, and that is because that should be our priority for the type of development we pursue in the next few years in the short term. The only, or the major reason that the city council wants to keep land zoned commercial is because we unfortunately are dependent on property taxes on those commercial properties to operate the city. So it's a fiscal problem, it's a budget decision that leads to this zoning decision. We shouldn't have that budget crisis. We need to tax corporations at higher rates, ridiculously low rates that we're charging very wealthy companies to operate in San Jose at our public cost, at our taxpayer dollars. They need to pay their fair share, fund the city generously so that we don't have to pursue development of our land around that fiscal reality. We can pursue development of our land the way it should be, and that should be prioritizing residential development over commercial and industrial development.
Thank you, candidates. That wraps up the general plan. Next, we're going to move on to fire questions. So we're going to go through a list of quicker questions and ask the candidates to limit answers to no more than one sentence. We'll start it down here and just go back and forth with each question. So the government is funding, government funding and incentives are necessary to build housing that's affordable to lower moderate-income households. Significant subsidies are required when building these permanent supportive housings for the homeless or for extremely low-income families, yet San Jose's Housing Department does not currently have a permanent source of funding. They're currently considering two potential funding sources, commercial linkage fees and a 2020 ballot measure. So first question is, do you support a commercial linkage fee?
Yes, I do.
We are currently studying that issue, and so until the data is in, and I know the whole scenario of what's happening in our city, I don't have an answer for that question.
Yes, I said that negative externalities are the job of the San Jose City Council to account for, and when looking at commercial development, there is a negative externality of displacement that goes with it, and we need to account for that.
Yeah, running off what Jake said, cost incurred by the city that comes from corporate development should be paid for by the corporate developers.
All right, second question. What type of revenue source would you support in a potential ballot measure, like non-residential partial tax, a partial tax, vacancy tax, or a property transfer tax?
Vacancy tax. We need a 1% vacancy tax on the market rate of every building that is left vacant.
We are in a housing crisis, we need all three.
I supported Measure V last year when it was on the ballot, and now the voters have spoken, and so I think it is not wise for the city council to spend money on another ballot measure in 2020.
I support all of those mentioned taxes. Those are all taxes on relatively wealthier landowners in our county, not on lower-income residents. A non-residential partial tax, tax on vacant business properties, and what is the third one, the property transfer tax. So when you're purchasing a home, this tax would apply, but again, these are relatively wealthier members of our community to whom these taxes would apply. I think these should be applied to fund affordable housing and higher taxes on large wealthy corporations. That's the funding source we're really not taking advantage of.
All right, thank you. Do you support subsidies for downtown high-rise developments?
No, I don't.
Just last night, I supported a fee reduction to make sure that downtown high-rise developments can continue so that we can have the residential units that we need downtown.
No, I do not. Last night, the city of San Jose gave private developers $67 million, and we have too many other things we need to do with that money.
The city should not be supporting the development of buildings that isolate people from each other and destroy our communities, and we need as much money as we can get.
All right, thank you. We'll lighten it up a little bit. How about each person, go over your favorite ice cream flavor.
My favorite ice cream flavor, the name of it is also the least likely thing that I like with my streets, and that is Rocky Road.
I'm a big fan of chocolate and marshmallows as well, but I have to go with s'mores.
Well, before I became lactose intolerant, my favorite ice cream was cookie dough.
My favorite flavor is raise the minimum wage to $25 per hour now. That's a new flavor, seriously. I just made it.
Thank you. Are you in favor of moving the mayoral election to presidential election years?
Yes, definitely, and I think it's a very important reform that we enact so that the mayor represents as many San Jose residents as possible.
No, I don't think it's fair to the odd-numbered districts and the potential turnout for those districts.
Yes, the mayor is a very important position for the city of San Jose, and not moving the mayor elections amounts to voter suppression.
Moving the mayor election to presidential years allows those to be at the table who are most affected by housing insecurity, so I'm in complete support.
How about, to lighten it up again, the last book you read.
I'll start with this one. It was Ishmael, it's about a telepathic gorilla.
Run for Something, a book by the staffer for Hillary Clinton, which states, "Don't just march, but run for something," and that's why I'm here.
I believe it was The Teaching of the Buddha.
All right, so, oh, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Davis.
I just finished The Kingdom of Blood and Bone by Mira Grant, which is a horror novel about the measles epidemic.
And Councilmember Davis likes sci-fi novels usually, right?
Sci-fi and horror, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. All right, so the next round of questions focus on anti-displacement and tenant protections, but before we do, I want to go off the script for a second. They allowed us the opportunity to ask a few follow-up questions, and I'd like to ask you one that's not on your, you know, on your list. And this one, it's important because as we all know, San Jose cannot work in a silo, cannot work alone. In order to solve the housing crisis, we need to work with our partners, right? And sometimes those partners aren't as cooperative, whether it's the county or other cities or other state agencies. So just yesterday, according to a memo from Mayor Sam Licardo that came out, negotiations with Caltrans for a bridge housing community, which is basically like tiny homes, have stalled, and it's been a source of frustration for the mayor. He wants to learn more about why. What strategies would you use, candidates, to bring outside agencies into the conversation and to win their support?
So I can start since I'm still holding the mic. So I think it's really important, and what I have found in my office is that it's really important to have good relationships with the other electeds. So I have a very good relationship, and my staff has a good relationship with the staff at Jim Bell's office. I think bringing in the state departments, you actually have to go through the electeds to do that. I've also been working with Supervisor Susan Ellenberg on issues that the county and the city have, either joint jurisdiction or joint interests like homelessness. I think it's really important to develop those relationships.
The way that we go about connecting to each other is about putting the same priorities forward. So my priority for the city of San Jose, for District Six, reducing income inequality, resonates with all of the elected leaders in the city of San Jose and in the State House. Through my work over the last year and a half pushing for state legislation on public banking, I've built relationships with the state assembly members, with state senators, and planning to do that, knowing that we have the same goal and the same ideas on how to get there, are the best way to move forward, connecting our different entities, moving forward in our community.
Call me foolish, but I believe in people power. One of my greatest skillsets is my deep ties to my community. I've put in over 3,000 hours of volunteer work throughout my career as a student, and I have full faith in the power that people have when it comes to changing decisions of not just the city government, but of all corporate and state-sponsored organizations. When it comes to these really crucial decisions that are, we no longer have time to wait and stall, it is going to be up to the people to say the loudest that these types of blockages are no longer allowed.
I think the strongest thing that San Jose can do to bring along other agencies, state and county agencies, to support efforts to house everyone, is leading by example. So if the best, if the absolute best sites for building housing for unhoused people are not ones that we can develop immediately, then we need to go with ones that we can. So on city-owned land or other properties now, to develop sufficient navigation centers for unhoused people and temporary housing, and not wait for another agency to cooperate, even if the site that they have available is better in many aspects, then other agencies will follow us. And this is a lot of what it takes, is we take the risk, we put in the money first, and our partners will come along. Because the crises are that important, people understand.
Thank you, candidates, for taking that unscripted question. Now let's talk about anti-displacement and tenant protections. Research shows that many households are being forced to move as housing costs rise. This is changing the nature of our neighborhoods and the community's character as longtime productive residents pack up and leave. You get 90 seconds for this question. How do you think that the city can stem displacement, and what measures would you support to address the displacement of residents as well as local businesses in San Jose?
I think that the city has, for a long time, not taken into account how low wages are for so many people, and so that's the first cause of why things cost too much, you can't afford to live in San Jose, is because their salary is too low. We shouldn't have poverty wages affecting, you know, 30, 50, more than 50% of the population. We need to have higher minimum wages, absolutely, and enforce those wage laws. I support raising our minimum wage in San Jose and lobbying all of our neighboring jurisdictions to $25 per hour as soon as we can feasibly do so. That's a living wage and more. We shouldn't be set with the fact that we have to depend on an underclass of residents who face starvation and have to live in conditions that harm our health. You know, the cheapest apartments are right next to the highways where the air is polluted, so children grow up with polluted lungs and brains. And that's a policy we intentionally, the city council and other elected officials accept, and we shouldn't accept that. We need to have a standard of living that everyone can afford to live here. That means higher minimum wages, higher wages for everyone, comprehensive benefits including universal health care. We can implement a system of health care where everyone can see a doctor and have their prescriptions filled. It just costs money. Fortunately, we have corporations to tax to get that money.
Displacement is such a complex issue that we decided to have a study session about it, which we're going to have on Tuesday in the afternoon at 3:30. If anybody is available, please feel free to come. We will be hearing from not only city staff, but also economists, policymakers from other areas, residents and business owners to say, to show us kind of what the extent of the problem is. residents and business owners to say, to, to show us kind of what the extent of the problem is and what some possible solutions are. What I have done and what I continue to do is to support building more housing in our city. Increasing the supply is one of the most important things that we can do to make sure people can stay here. I have also, I proposed, and the council passed my plan, to add an additional general plan review, um, a review process for affordable housing projects so that affordable housing projects can get built quicker, and to make sure that they actually do get built. Because in a time of rising construction costs, it's important that they can meet those, those review milestones so that they can continue to, um, so that they can receive their funding and actually get the project built. And again, I've talked about urban village plans a couple of times. They're a really important part of our general plan, and they have spaces for smaller local businesses. I think it's really important, um, we've heard over and over when we have urban village community meetings, that San Jose residents really value their local businesses and the character that it provides to their city and their neighborhoods. And it's important to, to continue to make sure that we have those spaces, which we do in all of our urban village plans.
So, to my understanding, District 6 is currently one of the leaders in the city of San Jose for evictions. So the first thing is protection. We have to make sure that we have rent control and other aspects of keeping families in the homes that they currently have. To Andrew's point, we need to address income inequality. No one wants to mandate affordable housing here and affordable housing there. We have a society that, for the last three or four decades, has decided not to address that root cause. And so, looking at different ideas policy-wise, like taxing corporations that pay their executives more than 100 times their employees, addresses that issue spot-on. Now, we continue to meet our market rate housing targets, but we continue to fail on our affordable housing goals. And the city of San Jose continues to give tax breaks or subsidies, whatever you want to call them, to developers making a profit. So I'd mentioned already that last night, the city of San Jose lost $53 million that it could have used for about 450 affordable housing units so that companies could make that money instead. Companies that were already claimed to make 4.1% profit. I don't know about everybody in the room. I have a socially responsible index fund. It makes about 1.5%. If I could use that money to make affordable housing for my residents, for people in San Jose, and make 4.1% profit, I would be really happy.
It's important to understand that displacement has happened, is happening, and will continue to happen unless mitigation is enforced. On my street alone, I've had neighbors who have lived there for decades who are now living in RVs because their home was remodeled. It is the city's responsibility to make sure that when those renovations happens and when the Googles come in and they displace swarms of people, that those people are not left to resort to their cars and their RVs and to shelters. For example, uh, the reason that the city government has failed to mitigate displacement, uh, when the international, when the international airport came in, eight square blocks of people were displaced overnight. Uh, and from my personal interactions with those people, they were not treated well. Uh, they were treated inhumanely by the city council. When Google comes in, we can't expect much more displacement. I live on Stockton Avenue, uh, less than half a mile from the Google Village. My, the, the demographics and the dynamics of my community will change, and I want to do as much as I can to make sure that that change is positive, always.
Thank you. The next question will be on the "Not in My Backyard" reaction from constituents. So, building housing is really hard, and one of the most challenging issues that we face is neighborhood opposition. So, how would you respond to neighbors who express concern about development within their neighborhood in your district?
So, as a Peace Corps volunteer, I met and talked with people that, in a different language, that I may never agree with, but the first point of understanding is, what is the world that we want to see? What is the world we want to leave for our future generations? And for people that are against development, we need to think about what their kids are going to look like. Where do they go? And the things that they love about their neighborhood, the things that I'm sure we all love about living in District 6, about living in San Jose, that we highlight those, we continue to make them a part of the lifestyles as we develop. And then, we listen to people and understand what are the negative consequences and how do we mitigate them?
Uh, in my experience as a current council member for District 6, we actually don't have a lot of "never in my backyard" people. Um, we often find the people who come have valid concerns. They're the ones who know their neighborhood best. And so, my job and the most important thing I do is really to listen to those concerns and then to, to bring the developer and the, the residents together to work out a really good project. It's, it's something that's really important. Change is hard, um, but when we all have, uh, a say in what a project is going to be like, we can actually have a better project than just what the developer, um, decided to do or what the, even what the neighbors thought would be best. When they're, when we come together with a compromise, I know there's, it's probably a dirty word now, compromise. People don't like to use it, and people don't like to do it. But I find that doing that in our projects on a regular basis is really how we get the best projects in our district.
I think that there, there always be some opposition to building more housing in the places where people are comfortable with the way it is. But a, a lot of opposition develops from the way the city conducts, uh, the development of new projects. Uh, one thing is, there needs to be, there needs to be real listening to what people prefer to see. What do the buildings look like? We don't have a strong review process in our, we have no dedicated architectural review board, for example, to address just what do buildings look like from the outside. That's just one aspect. Another thing is that the city has to show in good faith that it's able to build new buildings, tall buildings, big buildings that don't generate a lot of new car traffic. And absolutely, the city is failing on having adequate programs to do that. When a, a high-rise building is built, usually there's no incentives given to new residents to take transit. We can do a lot of things. They can receive discounted or free bus passes. They can be charged separately for car parking spaces, then the rent is charged. There are a whole bunch of programs the city doesn't enforce, uh, adequate programs. That's step one. Then residents will believe us when we say, "Oh, no, this isn't going to generate a lot of traffic." We have to put in place programs that work, that are being done in neighboring cities, including other cities here in this county, to make development sustainable and so that new people can move in, be our neighbors, and not be dependent on cars. And that's the, that is the major hesitancy that I share with my neighbors about having lots of new neighbors come, is that I don't want them to bring a lot of new car traffic. We don't have to do that. There are ways to develop sustainably and responsibly that we just have to decide to do.
Well, I have an interesting "not in my backyard" story, and it isn't because I don't like housing, it's because I don't like hotels. Um, the city council, uh, is implementing, uh, they have gone forward with the implementation of a hotel in the historic Rose Garden neighborhood. Uh, one of the only neighborhoods in the country where a child born into poverty can grow out of poverty. I think it's a terrible idea that we are using open space to build corporate hotels when we are having opportunity, and we're in a housing crisis, right? That's what I'm being told. Um, so when I say I don't want a hotel in my backyard, I'm ignored. And unfortunately, Dev Davis does support that hotel, a- as the tax revenue is larger. But I think we need to value what we gain from actually having high-density, low-rise, urban, uh, villages in our neighborhoods that build community, that build, um, positive interactions between people. And how many other examples are of that, where the city government is, is aiming for corporate development in these crucial pockets of land that we are running out of? And we need to have more empathy when it comes to housing. A large portion of Americans are one accident away from being unhoused.
Thank you. Next question will be on housing for college students specifically. So, in a recent statewide survey of community college students, 60% of those students had reported experiencing housing insecurity within the last year. Here at San Jose City College, that was seven out of, or, seven out of 10 students reported that they had experienced it as well. And at San Jose State, the number was 1 in 8. Students across the city are demanding parking spots for homeless students to sleep in. They're demanding dorm rooms for homeless students and emergency grants. Four city council members have publicly called for the San Jose State University president to partner with the city to address the homelessness issue and work with the homeless student crisis. What will you do to address the housing insecurity and the homelessness among San Jose's student population?
If you want to talk student housing, we can talk student housing. Um, my, that is my life. Uh, all my peers have some experience with housing insecurity. Um, just a, a couple days ago, I was on the San Jose State campus interviewing students who just randomly came up to me because I had a sign that said, "Let's Talk Student Housing", and a, a large portion of them had experienced homelessness. Uh, one, a really good friend of mine is aerospace engineer, was homeless for six months. This is a serious problem that is going to take serious solutions. Um, and we can't do anything without communication. And I could tell you from my experience as a student that there's a massive communication gap between the students and their, their student government and as well as the administration. Um, the administration needs to have all pockets loaded with solutions for housing. And then, when every individual student comes to them with a problem, they have some solution that they can offer them. Last year, San Jose State helped six students out of 4,500 with housing. I think that is despicable for the capital of Silicon Valley.
You mentioned emergency funds. The other way that the city of San Jose can help our students is by making community college free. Other cities have done it, and it's really important to addressing both income inequality, which is the root cause of our homelessness and housing crises, as well as just building better communities. So, it's only right that we take that step. But we also have to have very direct solutions for the students that are struggling now. And that is providing dorm opportunities, subsidies in that way. It's making sure that the city of San Jose is looking at our vacant hotel rooms, looking at other aspects of private, um, profit, where they are, at the end of the day, taking the subsidies that we want to give to our students and pocketing them themselves.
First, I just want to correct the record. We do have a community college program. It's called San Jose Promise. The mayor, um, brought that up, I think it was two or three budget cycles ago, and, um, we put seed money in, and now that is privately funded. So we do have San Jose Promise, and I believe San Jose City College is a beneficiary of that. The other thing, I, last year, I talked with Chancellor Breland about having safe parking at San Jose City College. They are talking about that as, still, and, um, was just talking with the president before we started here. That is something that they, they are considering, and we're going to work together on that. I have supported projects like the GRAD and other co-living projects downtown that are more affordable by design for students. And before, we talked about backyard homes, which are also more affordable by design for students and others, um, even small families. I'm also exploring new solutions, potentially housing in churches that have extra space and a matching program for students with empty nesters who have extra bedrooms.
I think that the, both of the, both the community colleges and state universities, including San Jose State University, have, have for a long time tried to pretend that housing isn't their responsibility. They only provide a little bit of housing on campus compared to very large student populations called themselves commuter schools. Most of our students live somewhere else, so it's not a problem. We need to have minimum standards at every college and university for at least emergency housing. This is something that it took a long time just to get a very small number of emergency beds. I believe we're at six or 12 for San Jose State. Someone correct me what the number is. We need to have dozens of emergency beds so any student can come and go have a place to sleep that they have. And that should be the case at community colleges as well, in their car or in a building in the school. And then beyond that, the schools need to be directed to be, have housing as one of their core responsibilities. It happened to be, in the case of my university, Northern Arizona University, that this was, for a long time, treated as a high priority, and we built a lot of housing. That needs to happen too at California universities and community colleges.
Thank you, candidates. We actually covered that issue with safe parking here at San Jose City College, and part of the concern was Chancellor Breland was worried about, um, taking funding from other sources and putting it towards safe parking. He felt like they would have to pay more for security and other, you know, measures and facilities for those students, so, of course, funding is always a concern. Lastly, we want to ask, what is the first action that you would take as a council member to respond to this crisis? And you guys have 30 seconds for this question, and then, um, we've got a few audience questions, and then we'll go to closing remarks. So we could start with Andrew, since you have the mic.
I, I would like to see a more detailed inventory of how, what, how, what housing is being built this year, next year, out five years, in 10 years, the whole pipeline, and what is stopping it from being built? I understand that there are restrictions on zoning, and would also like to direct a review to reform that. I consider it a reform that we have so much land that we're telling, we're telling real estate developers, "You can't build housing here." That should be fixed, that you can build housing in most places where it's appropriate. We should change that zoning, and then also make sure that we have coming down the pipeline every year, we actually build 5,000 units. We don't just build 1,000 like last year and just say, "Oops, sorry."
So the statistics that you were asking for, Andrew, were actually covered in the city council meeting last night in one of the, we had a housing night last night in one of the items for that. Um, I was trying to think back to what my first action on housing was, almost three years ago, and I couldn't come up with what that first one was. But I can tell you, I work on housing and homelessness every single day, and I have supported numerous housing projects in my district, both, um, affordable and market rate. And I always push the developers, and I think this is the most important thing, I always push the developers to provide as many units as possible, to be as dense as possible on the site that they are building on.
So, uh, my first action would be to require that any new development has onsite affordable housing. The city of San Jose and the city of Milpitas are on two, uh, only two of eight jurisdictions in the county that let developers pay fees in lieu of affordable housing. We need the affordable housing now. We don't need it in six years, we don't need it in 10 years. And so, when we talk about letting them densify, densifying is a, improves their profit margins. We don't need to convince them of that. We need them to make affordable housing, and we need it now.
Reiterating how firmly I support co-living, um, the city needs to have a comprehensive plan on how we can both implement co-living developments as well as more ADUs. We need examples of what that looks like. We need, uh, pre-written plans of what people can do. Uh, we need incentives for people to make ADUs, which we already have, but also incentives for co-living developments. Uh, co-living is great. Imagine college dorms, but we're all adults and people don't steal your cheezits. Right, Susie?
Okay, candidates. Um, so this is an audience question, and, and just as a reminder, if we don't get to all the questions, we're going to pass them along to the candidates to answer, and we'll make sure that the audience gets those answers. Um, so if there was a site for a navigation center in your district, would you fight for it?
Yes. Again, we're in a homelessness crisis. We need to have avenues where our unhoused neighbors have spaces to go to for support. Navigation centers are a very key path to making that happen.
How much time do I have?
30 seconds.
Okay. Well, I don't have time to go through the whole, um, Hope Village scenario that happened. So, I think I'm on record as supporting sites for, um, homeless residents in my district, but I frankly would do it differently next time and bring the community in much earlier in the process so that we could work out all the concerns in advance as opposed to guessing what the concerns were and trying to address them, um, at the last minute. But I had a, we were under a tight deadline, so, since you're not telling me to stop yet. Um, we were under a tight deadline, and it was very hard to, to get that all done. And I am still sad that we did not get Hope Village in District 6.
Yes, absolutely. I would fight for more navigation centers in District 6 and in other parts of the city. We are, we are far behind in opening those. We need to have the capacity and those located where people, it's convenient for people to use them, and it serves enough people. That's really step one to what we're not addressing in our homelessness crisis, is establishing those. I would support them wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I, I wish they would just pop up, and then we'd be like questioning it. But like Andrew Boone said, we actually have to actively find those spaces and make them happen. Um, and they can only happen in spaces that don't already have developments on them. And what we're realizing as a city- we're realizing as a city is that open space is and will continue to be the most precious resource. Again, if you have a vacant lot, maybe we won't tax you if you put a tent sites or a community garden on your lot. Or, if you have an open parking lot that is unused half the day, no, we're going to take that because we need open space to solve these really pressing issues in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Another question from the audience. If you take away commercial land, where will the tax incomes for the city come from that are needed to run essential services?
Great. Well, we saw last night how we can take away money from the city, and it doesn't come from taking away corporate land. It takes bad decisions of the city council, in my opinion. Again, I don't support taking away corporate land. I think we could do just fine with the massive amounts of R1-zoned housing units that we have already. It is a lot less hoops to jump through to add more, to add more rooms to your house. And that is again why I am so strongly in favor of co-living.
So, the tax initiatives that were talked about at the beginning of the forum are ways that we can improve revenue for our housing department, for other needed quality-of-life aspects and services that the city provides. We also need to be advocating, as city council members, not advocating for our schools and communities-first initiatives around commercial property taxes, making sure that we're keeping small businesses and residents safe from these increases because we know they're struggling, is how we're going to change what we have to look at and what we have to work with as city council when we have the freedom to decide, do we need this to be commercial or do we need this to be residential?
The reason it's so important to preserve our commercial lands is because businesses actually generate more in tax revenue for the city than they use in services. And it's important to preserve those commercial lands because we want our residents, I want you to get the services that you deserve. And we know that it's harder for residents to pay those, to pay those taxes. So, we get actually multiple revenue streams from businesses. We don't just get their property tax. As Andrew stated, we have a corporate tax, and we also get sales tax if they're a retail business. We actually just passed yesterday an agreement with eBay to get, because of a new lawsuit that went through, eBay is going to start collecting sales taxes for its sellers, and we're going to get 70% of that. So, it's a great new revenue source for the city.
Yes, the city of San Jose is definitely too dependent on property taxes from commercially-zoned land for our own good. So, we're designing our zoning around the fact that we're too dependent on it. That's not a good policy. A good policy would be to not be chasing commercial property tax dollars, especially because a lot of the new jobs that come in those big new office buildings pay very high salaries, and that is an engine for displacement of long-term residents. We're talking about Google hiring the best in the country and the world software engineers. So, jobs that aren't available to a lot of us who live in San Jose, we need to be pursuing middle-income jobs that don't displace us, first of all. And it just needs to be a higher priority to develop homes for people, and we can assess higher taxes on wealthy corporations than we are doing now. San Francisco and Oakland, for example, both assess around $2,000 per employee per year. In those large tech companies, we assess $60. So, we're just giving that money away to very rich people to go in their very large bank accounts rather than funding essentially, essential city services for residents.
All right. Thank you, candidates. One last question. We're almost out of time, so we're just going to go yes or no for this question. Have you or will you receive campaign contributions from developers or apartment owner organizations? Just yes or no?
No.
Yes.
No.
Nope.
Thank you. We're going to do candidate closing remarks. Each candidate will get one minute for closing remarks. Start down there.
Well, thank you all for taking the time to listen to us. This was an amazing experience for myself personally. I'm sure we can all say the same. As you leave today, I want you to think about your past actions on how you've pushed the current leaders into taking steps for housing affordability and not just looking to the future leaders. In my opinion, the past leaders have clearly failed us when it comes to tackling crises, ecological crisis, climate crisis, housing crisis. They just keep adding up and the solutions are not coming yet. So, I want you to consider, as adults who have seen many leaders come in and out of politics, what we really need in leadership moving forward to tackle these serious crises that are affecting more and more people every day. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming and I appreciate the opportunity. Again, we need leaders that understand the root causes of the systematic failures that we're seeing right now. The housing crisis is absolutely a result of elected officials who have decided that they're going to work within a box that has kept things the way they are, that has kept them getting elected to the next step, rather than being leaders on issues that our community needs. It's why I'm not taking money from corporations or developers. It's why some of the first policies that I want to introduce are around publicly funded elections and ranked choice voting so that we can actually look at what our community thinks is the right direction and the right leader without having all of these complicated opportunities to suppress what it is that our community thinks and how that is that they engage on a local level. So, as a Peace Corps volunteer and a biomedical engineer, I have a really interesting combination of skills and experiences that has let me take a step back and say, "City of San Jose needs someone that will really represent all our voices." And that's what I hope to do.
I also want to thank you all for coming tonight and participating. As I said in our opening remarks, housing and frankly homelessness as well are two of the biggest issues, not only in San Jose but Bay Area-wide. And I appreciate you coming to listen to us. I do want to make sure I hit a couple of points because there were some things that I didn't get a chance to rebut. First of all, I am not in favor of the proposed hotel on Stockton, and I don't really appreciate some of my opponent's mansplaining for me to you. So, if you have an issue or a question for me about what my position is on something, please come directly to me and please don't listen to my opponent's mansplain it to you. Secondly, I just want to point out that we ignore market realities at our peril and solutions are not as simple as they might seem on the surface. And again, I talked about this a little bit at the beginning. Projects need to get financed through banks, and they're competing with other projects, not just in our city but elsewhere. And so, if those projects can't get financing, they can't get built. We on the city council always study an issue. We bring in economists, we bring in other consultants to tell us what the market realities are so that we can make the best informed decision possible. And that's what I bring to you, and that's why I am asking for your vote for, to reelect me to this seat.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Boone, and I'm running for city council because I see a city council just not addressing our problems. Okay, so, we are continuing most of the same policies, almost the same as they were last year and the year before that and 10 years before that. Housing affordability has gotten worse in the last term of anybody on the city council. It's something not being addressed. Poverty not being addressed. The city of San Jose can do more. We can do much more. We can lift everyone up. We can mandate that wages be set at a livable level. And we can provide housing for everyone. We can create a department of housing that builds housing, and we don't have to beg developers for, "Chip in an extra set of money so we can develop what you're not developing." Why don't we just build it ourselves? It's a business. The city can run a business. We can do this. We can provide health care to everyone. If we want to do these things, we can do it. There is absolutely not a lack of money in San Jose to fund generous public services to make everyone's life better.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We're going to take a short break to bring up the Senate candidates, and once again, thank you.